Congratulate Board Member McKissick, our very own The Price is Right contestant. Come on down, come on down. So I'd like to invite her to tell us a little bit about it. It was, she hid it from all of us. So please, please tell us. As any kid grew up in the late seventies and eighties, you know, there were only three channels on TV when we were growing up. So The Price is Right, summertime, that was what it was all about. And so this was simply a lifelong dream. I didn't think it all the way through because I told no one, not even like family members, that I was doing this. And never expected I would make it to the showcase showdown. And so, yeah, so it was fun. And I never had so much fun losing at games. I thought I was a good game player with the pricing games, but I'm not, I'm not. But it was amazing and Drew Carey was amazing. He's so friendly and it was a lot of fun. So thank you to everyone who sent me a gazillion texts saying, "You played for me, you were representing me in that experience." So thank you, it was a lot of fun.
I think we're gonna make you a school district meme.
It's funny because like I didn't tell them what I did or anything. I was real like, "No, no, 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 no." So, but it was fun, so thank you.
That's great, thank you.
You can tell I was very excited, like, "What?"
All right, thank you so much again for sharing that with us. That looks like a lot of fun. Next, I would like to have the spotlight on the arts and I will hand this over to Mr. Jenkins. Thank you.
The MSCS Fine Arts Department would like to recognize the winners of the Delta Fair and Mid-South Fair Student Art Contest. MSCS students won a total of seventy-four awards in these regional competitions, outwinning private schools, municipalities, and charter schools. Congratulations, students and teachers, for your hard work, talent, and accomplishment. Once I call your name, please come down. Emma Banks, Idowhile Elementary, third place. Sarah Sparrows, North Haven Elementary, fifth place, Special Learners Division. Addison Downs, North Haven Elementary, sixth place, Special Learners Division. Liberty Handy, Voluntine Elementary, second place, Kindergarten Grade Division. Cassia Porter, Cordova Elementary, third place, Kindergarten Grade Division. Jewel Hampton, White Station Elementary, seventh place, Kindergarten Grade Division. Sayla Barber, Cordova Elementary, eighth place, Kindergarten Grade Division. Osvaldo Longo, White Station Elementary, third place, First Grade Division. Tatum Cole, Riverwood Elementary, fourth place, First Grade Division. Braylon Gales, Voluntine Elementary, fifth place, First Grade Division. Savannah Richmond, Peabody Elementary, tenth place, First Grade Division. Nova Miller, John P. Freeman, K.A., second place, Second Grade Division. Frankie Joy Jones, North Haven Elementary, fourth place, Second Grade Division. Bailey Hazlett, Chimney Rock Elementary, sixth place, Second Grade Division. Atlantis Mitchell, White Station Elementary, seventh grade, second place, Division. Rehi Jeremiah Franco, Riverwood Elementary, eighth place, Second Grade Division. Dakota Moore, South One Elementary, ninth place, Second Grade Division. Ren Stenbridge, White Station Elementary, first place, Third Grade Division, Best of Show. James Trigueros, Peabody Elementary, ninth place, Third Grade Division. Tadavia Smith, A.B. Hill Elementary, tenth place, Third Grade Division. Sawyer Swink, Riverwood Elementary, first place, Fourth Grade Division. Alona Anderson, Peabody Elementary, seventh place, Fourth Grade Division. Alina Abudaya, Riverwood Elementary, ninth place, Fourth Grade Division. Claire Mitchell, Idowhile Elementary, tenth place, Fourth Grade Division. J. Rodriguez, White Station Elementary, fourth place, Fifth Grade Division. Maloney Story, Cordova Elementary, fifth place, Fifth Grade Division. Sidney Gooch, Oak Forest Elementary, ninth place, Fifth Grade Division. Astrid Martinez, Colonial Middle School, third place, Sixth Grade Division. Blair Hall, Colonial Middle, fourth place, Sixth Grade Division. Omeria Malone, Dexter K.A., tenth place, Sixth Grade Division. Eden Siles, White Station Middle, third place, Seventh Grade Division. Draven Baggett, Colonial Middle, ninth place, Seventh Grade Division. D'Angelo Oliver, Colonial Middle, tenth place, Seventh Grade Division. Vincent Stafford, White Station Middle, second place, Eighth Grade Division. Presley Durin, White Station Middle, fourth place, Eighth Grade Division. Lynn Baltazar, Colonial Middle, seventh place, Eighth Grade Division. Yoslin Mendez, Colonial Middle School, eighth place, Eighth Grade Division. Jaslyn Macon, White Station High School, first place, Ninth Grade Division, Best of Show Artist Link Award. Corinne Allen, Overton High School, fifth place, Ninth Grade Division. Mei Ming Feng, Overton High School, third place, Ninth Grade Division. Corinne Allen, Overton High School, fifth place, Ninth Grade Division. Kayla Lamb, White Station High School, first place, Tenth Grade Division. Olivia Pullen, White Station High School, third place, Tenth Grade Division. Destiny Jefferson, Overton High School, fourth place, Tenth Grade Division. Carolyn Vasquez, Overton High School, tenth place, Tenth Grade Division. Anson Yan, White Station High School, first place, Eleventh Grade Division, Best Overall Student Art Award. Amy Rice, White Station High School, third place, Eleven Grade Division. Gerald Lenges, Overton High School, sixth place, Eleven Grade Division. Michaela Stinson, South One High School, eighth place, Eleven Grade Division. Isaiah Colaway, Overton High School, ninth place, Eleven Grade Division. Sarai Holloway, Overton High School, second place, Twelfth Grade Division. Long Doe, White Station High School, third place, Twelfth Grade Division. Namasi Hampton, East TSTEM Academy, sixth place, Twelfth Grade Division. Shelby Thompson, White Station High, eighth place, Twelfth Grade Division. Melanie Romero, South One High School, tenth place, Twelfth Grade Division.
Okay, now? We are now, if you'll clear the room, but we've got the Mid-South Fair coming up. And I have to tell you, I went and saw all the art at the Mid-South Fair, had a blast. I took pictures personally, myself. So we're gonna wait for the Delta Fair families. If you could leave as quietly as possible, so we can honor our Mid-South Fair students.
All right, so we have our Mid-South Fair Art Contest winners. Laurel Francis Allen is not here. So next, we have second place, Namara Lee, from Peabody Elementary School. Fifth place, we have Jace Doughty, from Berkler Elementary School. Skylar is not here. Next, we have Madison Williams, from John P. Freeman. Next, we have Roy Britega, from Berkler Elementary School. Roy. Jade Williams is not here. So we're gonna move to Sarah Felipe, from Colonial Middle School. Next, we have Mei Ming Feng, from White Station High School. We also have Jaslyn Macon, from White Station High School. Jenny Correa is not here. We'll have Anson Yan, from White Station High School. We have Long Doe, from White Station High School. Tony Jones is not here. We have Deanna Broyles, from White Station High School. And those are all the students who are present for Mid-South Fair Art Contest winners.
I just want us to recognize how much talent we have in Memphis Shelby County Schools. We had two-time winners coming, they were recycled through. That work is phenomenal and some of that work can be posted now. They can sell some of that work right now. That is phenomenal. So I want us to understand how important it is for us to develop the full child, the whole child. So I appreciate our focus on the arts and academics and attitude and attendance and athletics. Absolutely. So thank you. All right, so our next thing on the list is superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to add quarter-one financials. And at this time, Mr. Langston. It should be in the committee.
Thank you, Dr. Richmond, board members. As we cue this up, so pursuant to TCA code annotated, we have to present these quarterly. We'll get on a regular cadence to do it monthly, just to inform the board. This presentation is to give you an update of what our finances look like, primarily from the general fund, next slide. Next slide. So, board members, this is, this first slide shows what we like to do for the financials is give a year-over-year view pursuant to last year. And one of the reasons we do it is because that's what the audit requires us to do. And we explain a variance of anything outside of about a ten percent variance. It means if it's decreased or increased. So I'll go over some of the notable variances that we have. First, we have revenues to decrease, this money that's coming in, of about thirty-two, thirty-three point two million dollars. That is not necessarily a bad thing. One of the things that's important to note is that TISA changed. You'll see it in a minute. But one of the things that changed for TISA is that now charter schools, for the state portion of the revenues that come in, they get directly funded for the state portion. And as a district, we do a flow-through of just, well, remember Porter perked up. We get just a portion of the local funding that we pass on to them. So again, the same portion of TISA goes directly to charter schools and we only pass on the local portion that comes from the Shelby County government. So that has changed through legislation this year. That's why you see most of our revenues decreased year-over-year from the money that we received in. We're still in a good standing. Shelby County decreased about eight point eight million dollars. That's primarily due to just the timing of when we receive sales tax and things of that nature, so we're still in good standing there. And again, that twenty million dollars you see is related to debt of TISA. And then lastly, you see we decreased five point five million dollars in the federal revenues. And what happened with that is essentially last year, we had the final iteration of ESSR. With ESSR and most federal grants, we get indirect costs. This year, we're not receiving all of ESSR. We don't have as many indirect costs coming in from those grants. So you'll see those revenues decreased five point five million dollars, next slide. Now, this goes and looks at our expenditures. We just looked in revenues, money coming in, and now we're looking at expenditures that's going out. So overall, our expenditures increased by nine point five million dollars from the end of September, we're looking at Q1 financials to last year. Some of the primarily, primary increases are, you'll see we increased twenty-eight point three million dollars in salaries. The biggest increase you'll see noted there is if you'll remember, we did teacher bonuses from the state. So their revenue came in and we sent their money out the door to the tune of a little bit about seventeen million dollars in salaries. Some of the other increases that we have is that we implemented teacher raises this year. So teachers on July, the one, received their raises. So you'll see that number is included here. Employee benefits kind of go with salaries. You'll see we had a decrease of contracted services year-over-year for about six point million dollars. That's primarily due to we've done less construction projects this year as opposed to last year. This time, you'll see we have an eight point eight million dollar increase in other charges that's primarily due to what we have for textbooks. So we did assigned textbook adoption this year. That is at eight point million dollars. And then lastly, the largest number you see, again, at negative thirty point five million dollars. Anywhere you see in parentheses in financial terms, that means that it's a negative or a decrease that you'll see. But again, that charter schools decrease, again, doesn't mean that we're passing less money to charter schools. That just means we're passing along less because of what I mentioned last time about the money is going directly to charter schools for the state portion, next slide. This, I'll pause here. This will give you a number of what I just alluded to. What I wanted you to turn your attention to is our final total expenditure number. You'll see we're at twenty-four percent. So we're through the first quarter of our financials. You want to be about twenty-five percent or a fourth of the way there. You'll see we're in good standing. So we're at twenty-four percent, so we're again in good standing of where we would have spent our budget, next slide. Now, our next slide, we'll go into our capital expenditures. So we have currently four active appropriations from the county-funded projects. In FY twenty-three, we have a budget of about a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. We've expensed about twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars and we've incurred a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. So we are on track to spend all of FY twenty-three appropriation. The only open project you'll have there is two intercoms. Next, if you look in FY twenty-four, we have two open projects there. That's money that's tied in for the New East Region High School and Fraser High School. Then if you go to FY twenty-five, we have eight open projects. Again, this New East Region, as well as Fraser High Schools. We have a few miscellaneous, six miscellaneous projects that's open, but it's due to fire life safety that we have. We received about five million dollars from the county for their funding. And then lastly, is FY twenty-six, we have seventeen open projects there. Again, the common theme is we're carrying over Northeast Region High School as well as the new Fraser High Schools. And then we have fifteen other projects that's kind of in the pre-bid stage, next slide. The next slide you'll see is, well, this slide again is those appropriations and all of the projects. You'll see the details of the appropriations in these next slide. So I've talked to those, you can keep going as you'll see the detailed projects and you can read them for your review, next slide. Next slide again. Okay, so, board members, you'll see, you'll remember, we talked earlier this year about ESSR. ESSR, again, we still have, we had the fifty-five million dollars in ESSR. Ninety-nine percent of it was tied into construction projects. We've expensed, we've expensed twenty-five million dollars of the fifty-five million dollars. We have another twenty-five million dollars in convert. And we expect to expense all of these projects by March of 2026, next year, next slide. Again, this is ESSR, continue, next slide. And then finally, this is our general fund, fund balance, CIP projects. If you remember, last year, we pulled from our fund balance a number of funds, so we can do several capital projects. These are those projects that's continued to this year. All of them are expected to be finished this year. But this is just an update of where we are for our, this is our general fund, fund balance for the firm banks, next slide. This is a continuation of this. And you'll see we have about six point four million dollars that rolled over this uncommitted, next slide. That concludes the Q1 financials. I'll take any questions that you have.
I have Commissioner Love and I have Commissioner Hewitt Garcia, in that order.
I have two questions related to HVAC systems. Several schools that I went to, they had an HVAC system installed this year. And the schools are still hot.
Board member Love, if you can get us those schools, because we've been kind of updating all of our schools, if they're still hot, obviously. The answer that I'm also gonna give you is that if for any reason those HVAC systems aren't working properly, they're a warranty, we're gonna get with the vendors to ensure that it's working.
This was before the cold weather came in.
I got you, I understand.
And the next question is, the former superintendent, the board and the former superintendent didn't follow the nature of the law? And we had to pay those employees that the former superintendent who let go? Where did that money, what line item was that money in?
So I believe, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Love, what we decided to do, or what the board decided to do is that, at the time when we released employees, we decided to pay them out through, August thirty-first of last year. So what we did was, we did a budget amendment at that time to move funding over to pay those employees out. But that is, that happened, that wouldn't be in these financials, that happened last year. But essentially, what we did was did a budget amendment. We found where we had some savings and some funds to pay those employees.
Where did the money come from, what line item?
It came from salaries and benefits. So one of the things that you'll all note that we have is what we call vacancy savings. What that means is that we have a number of positions that's been budgeted that we haven't filled at the moment, so we're achieving a savings for that. So one of the things we do in budget is we do a trend to determine about seven percent year-over-year savings for vacancies that we have. So what that means is that will, that money either fall to fund balance or we can bring an amendment to do something differently as we go along the year. So what we did at that time was chose to do some, use some vacancy savings to pay those employees out.
I don't understand. Because we voted on a new budget in the summertime. She let, the board voted to let go of those people in the same summer. We voted on a budget that was dismiss those people and we still had to pay them.
Again, we chose to pay them. So again, remember, the budget is fluid. You vote on the budget on June the twelfth and July the one, it may change. We did a budget amendment at that time to move funding to pay those employees out. So a budget amendment essentially means that we took money from the salary, they stayed in salaries, but we took it from a department and put it somewhere else just to pay those employees out.
The next question is, the current superintendent, he revamped the departments and got us what we needed. I would like to see a cost comparison from the former superintendent to this superintendent, salaries and employees.
Yes, ma'am, I actually have that handy, so we can send it to you as soon as tomorrow. So what we did was did a cost analysis to determine, Dr. Richmond presented an org structure a few months ago. So what we did with that org structure is looked at when we did the budget, what positions we had today and what we had last year. I can show you a savings or positions that we defunded last year and any new positions, and it'll show you a total cost savings. For, right off the top of my head, I can remember that we had a number of instructional coaches last year that was budgeted. We don't have as many as this year, so we use a lot of that funding for those to re-implement a lot of the positions that we have. But I have it in the Excel format that I can show it in time.
Board member Hewitt Garcia?
Thank you. On the general fund revenues and expenditures page, is the actual year-to-date, or the, I guess, the budget? Let me ask the real question. Are we on track to get? Let me ask the real question. Are we on track to get level funding based on enrollment or have we lost dollars based on enrollment? If so, how much?
So if if you remember that our current budget is based on prior enrollment, so.
So looking forward to next year, are we on track to lose attendance based dollars? Or are we are we holding steady?
So that would be um so what I'll bring to you next month is a we set up the next budget for FY twenty seven. What you'll see is us do a forecast year over year of what we have currently enrolled in. And what I can tell you is that year over year, we're down a little over two thousand students. So um essentially that we will see a decrease in revenue year over year based for next year. The current budget is is in place and it's fine because again, it's based on the enrollment for prior year. The attendance and the county funding is fine because our tenants um percentage based on a weighted full-time equivalent eighty eight is fine. I do anticipate us to have some decreased revenues and I'm happy to bring it to the board next month to kind of talk about preliminary forecast based on our enrollment decrease for a number of reasons, uh vouchers, so on and so forth.
So the estimated two thousand enrollment decrease, if I am I remembering correctly, that our average per pupil is about twelve thousand, the aver- we're looking at a potential twenty four million dollars decrease if 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 no students show up the rest of the year.
That's that's roughly about right if you take the twelve thousand. To your to your point, it's about twelve thousand per pupil.
Yes.
So if you look at about roughly two thousand students decrease year over year, you're looking at about twenty four, twenty five million dollars.
Is are there any um solutions or investments that we can make to find those students who have not enrolled? Um I think, you know, we've talked about the dear neighbor, right? Are the is there an opportunity to pay canvassers or or put out a proposal that says for every student you get enrolled? There is like there is almost an outcomes payment since we are if we are on track to lose revenue. Is there is there amount we can invest to find those students, um whether it's new personnel or um an external organization, some someone who does this work in in finding and recruiting students?
Uh yes, ma'am. One of the things that we're looking at is the preliminary data to determine what the loss is. What I what I can tell you is that for instances of like students who have chose to do um vouchers, that's another component. And then there's a number of students as Ms. Davis alluded to in her presentation that has chose to do homeschool. What I can also tell you is is that the charter schools um enrollment has held steady. So um we haven't seen that the issues, but as we dive into the preliminary data, I think that we can bring back a a recommendation of how we can canvass, whether we can do it internally or if we need help to determine how we can find students.
And I think there's also an opportunity to see, is there something that we are doing better or providing services around uh that we have more opt I'm thinking about students with exceptionalities. Maybe we have an economies of scale on more offerings for um than schools around us, right? Is there something we can highlight that recruits people out of where they're where they're at? Can we show the greatness that is Memphis Shelby County Schools? Well, we know we we have a competitive advantage. So I think thinking about it from a marketing perspective too. So that's just more of a food for thought. I would love to see how we can.
Yes, ma'am. How we can put our budget to use. I got you.
Thank you. Um Board Member Porter. Board Member Coleman, Vice Chair Coleman.
Thank you. Um Mr. Langston, our intercom replacements, how often do we have to replace those?
That that's a great question. Um Ms. Coleman, as you quite often, but if you you're here, Ms. Stewart and I allude to that we do it on a phased approach because, to be honest with you, probably seventy percent of our schools need an intercom replacement. Now, once we've replaced them, there are some new mechanisms in place to make it last a little longer. But we've been doing them in phases because of the funding that's available. And one of the issues that we have is that uh the switches um that the intercoms are uh just used to replace the intercoms, a lot of them have been on back orders. So that's why you haven't seen us um update them. So Ms. Stewart and I, we're working diligently, working with our schools to um even create the next phase as we um replace our intercoms.
How many of our schools still need an intercom replacement?
Um Ms. Stewart, you know that off the top of your head, we can get that back to you. Um but I'll be transparent, it's probably a number of them. Um and one of the things that we've done and not nothing that we're proud of is just provided them kind of with walkie talkies. If they haven't uh worked at all, we've done replacement parts for those that we can get back online. But eventually, um and we'll talk about marquises and things of that nature as we go into this next next budget cycle, eventually we'll have to replace the majority of our intercom systems that hadn't been touched in a number of years.
Thank you.
Board Member Love.
Um Ms. Davis um said in committee, um we got fourteen hundred students back. You knocked on fourteen hundred doors.
We identified eighteen eighty nine. Of that eighteen eighty nine, ten one thousand forty two registered by the end of the second day. So whether we knocked on their door, left the hangers on their door, uh those students re-enrolled with us.
I would be interested to know of those one thousand forty kids, how many are returning to school every single day?
Yes, ma'am. Uh which was the, we gave you the average attendance rate, but you want to know.
How many of the one thousand students that you knocked on the door and they registered? How many of them are truant or missing school on a regular basis?
Okay. Yes, ma'am. We'll get that to you.
Because attendance is our bread and butter.
All right, I have um a a question. With the overall general fund summary page, when you look at the salaries, and I appreciate this breakdown, Mr. Langston, uh you talked about this was largely what was reflected in this was teacher bonuses and teacher raises. Could you provide us with the percentage of the salaries that are attributable to teachers and school-based employees? Because I think we talk about this all the time where we have, we have in our budget salaries, but we're not clear about what that me who that applies to, who those salaries are applicable to.
If I'm not mistaken, it was in the investments when we were getting the board to approve the investments. I think we had outlined where um like for SEAs, the uh amount was what about six, seven million Tito? And then for administrators, it was an investment. And then for teacher raises, it was an investment. It was in the initial budget, but we'll get it to you, Chair Chairman Kenny.
Yes, I'm just saying for as as we as we um build upon the knowledge base of our community, we need to remind them of what these what we have invested in every time they see this. So that that's all that I'm I'm asking, that we're bringing them along with us and they're seeing the same thing we're seeing. And that is how we're spending our money and for what and for whom.
Yes, ma'am. I I I took your question to say that uh to show uh based on obviously salaries uh and personnel is the largest part of our budget. And then on top of that, the largest part of the salaries are what's actually in schools. It's very small and minute to the central office despite what people think so. Um and I also have a slide to show you that we've invested in schools. I believe I showed it to, it was in my, it was in budget one oh one. Well, one of the things we want to educate the public is showing that as TISA has increased, we've sent more dollars down to schools. And over the past three years, now year four, we've invested in over eighty million dollars in the teacher salary schedule as well as Dr. what Dr. Richmond alluded to, we've had SEAs that for thirty two million dollars. Um and a lot of that, we got seventy eight attendance liaison, a lot of those reports supports are directly to schools and very little of it is central office. The only thing we've done to central office this year is essentially um built out the student support department to be functional to the needs that we have. But I can show, I I know what your question is and we'll be uh sure to highlight it going forward.
Thank you. I'm see, I don't know who came first. Board Member McKissick and then Board Member Love.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to actually follow up on wh- where do you stand regarding uh the pay increases like for administrative principles and can you speak to that?
Yes, ma'am. That's a great question. Um so um the first thing we've done is take care of teachers. Uh as we're doing um what we call a salary harmonization and looking at the data, um what you're, I think you're referring to is the two percent increase that we normally give to everybody else. Uh that data has um been scrubbed and we are now prepared to, this is a pay period next. This pay period, we get paid on Friday, I believe. I hope so. Um and then um and the next on the next paycheck, we expect to um pass on the increase to everybody outside of our uh teachers and teacher types.
Michelle answered um asked my question. Where are we at on the salary harmonization study?
So we've done a number of it already. So some of the things that we've touched is um and we've worked closely with our teacher associations is we've already uh trued up things like uh our special education assistance. Um and we're continuing to do the work. Um Ms. Oliver has hired a compensation director that starts on, I believe, October the twenty seventh. Um that's going to come in and kind of help us implement um a new salary structure. We are uh the data is there. Uh we've started implementing some of them as we've gone, but we know we still need to touch a number of employees as we go.
I'm asking for the district staff who um the district staff who salaries were cut, they're still doing the same work even more and their salaries were cut.
I I'll I'll address that. One of the things, the compensation director will start on October twenty seventh. The salary study that was done this past January, completed in March, that had never been implemented implemented. Since I got here, I've had another consultant to look at that, look at that study. And there are some things that have been identified that we really can't implement, which is my plan to get that done. Um where there's salary ranges, there's where everybody will understand what the ranges are for jobs. A part of this is looking at job descriptions and ensuring that the job descriptions match what people are doing. So we'll have to make sure that that's in order. Now, there were and a lot of things I'm not, don't totally understand. Where you're talking about some of the salaries were taken down and they were, people are still doing some of the same jobs. We will look at those and assess those. Um there probably will be some budget limitations to try to bring everybody back to where they were, but those will be on some case by case basis. But the goal with this is to create a salary structure that is aligned based on the work. It is equitable based on what the market provides. And then everybody knows how the salary structure is for those jobs. We'll ensure people are in the jobs based on the job title and they're doing what the job description says it does. Now, I do understand it's not going to make everybody happy because there have been a lot of things that have been done. And I don't want to necessarily say wrong, a lot of decisions that were made that were somewhat outside of some maybe in the absence of knowing what some of the rules are to to assess salaries. But we have to start somewhere. So the goal is to look at the information that was done with the salary study. And I did hire a consultant to oh to look at that and give an overview, which they've done, I've shared. And the uh compensation director gets here and some of these things we will be able to implement. Some of the things that we have found with, I'll give an example of some minimum pay, where there were some pay ranges that were raised. The entry level was raised, but we had some employees that were not brought up to the minimum pay. So we're correcting those things as as we see those. So specifically to your question about the people that are in jobs that they were in before the same job and their salaries were lowered, I can't sit here and say that they were raised back up, but I will commit to you that all of those will be reviewed in detail and everybody brought to the point of being as comparable as we can be within the budget. But from going forward, we will get out of this, people not knowing and wanting to have salary views because they think that they should make what somebody else makes. But that's going to come with clear communication, everybody understanding what go what a job descriptions mean. Then we've got to make sure that our management people understand we should not work people out of class. If the job description is what this job description is and that person should be doing that. If there's another job that's a higher paying job and you have them doing it, then we need to talk about, do you have the right job? We just can't do that. So there's a lot of structure that has to be put in place that my goal is to get it there.
You said the compensation study was completed in March?
I think it was completed. My if my memory serves me correctly, it was completed.
Been asking for it for months. The board um superintendent, um the board needs to see that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hewitt Garcia.
Let me add, so help me, Ms. Oliver, uh because I'm I'm saying yes, ma'am uh to uh Board Board Member Love. But um are there any nuances to that study that you would like to add context to, which would have been a reason why uh it wasn't shared?
Yes, there there were. And when I got here and I asked for the study, because it was complete and I don't know, I I think it was because of all the different changes that were going on. It was never really reviewed, looked at and implemented. There were some suggestions that were made from that uh salary study that just weren't quite clear. So I got some other questions that I had answered and just got that overview a couple of weeks ago. And since my compensation director's coming on, put together all of that information to be able to provide that. So we can provide that as well as the new overview and some of the nuances and what we see in the direction that we want to move that um in my opinion, will put us in a better place as it relates to how we pay our employees and the transparency that comes with it.
Thank you. I think what I'm hearing you say, Dr. Richmond and Ms. Oliver, is that the compensation study was not satisfactory.
Some of it was and some of it wasn't. There was enough in there that was que- when I say questionable, I I don't mean that there was anything done wrong with it, but some of the comparisons that were used, were they comparing the right thing? And and just to be first to clear, there were some comparisons that were just to teacher salaries, but we have other salaries that we pay that were totally out because we employ people at central office that are doing things that the market calls for pay to be different.
Thank you. Board Member Hewitt Garcia.
I was just, uh it seems like we have a lot of questions uh about the budget related to HR and we did not get to our HR business systems review. Um we will be discussing that next week. So I think these are, one, it's a preview for the types of questions you may get as we go through that. Um but if board members have additional questions, maybe uh bringing those to that HR business systems review because I think what we want to do is address those um either additional studies or supports that you need to make sure yep, folks know um why they make what they make and what they and what their potential is uh to have a career in MSCS.
So I think what what we'll do is we'll, um again, these are HR questions that we're at we're asking in in a budget um presentation. So we will hold those additional um questions for that business systems review.
I'd be glad to answer those. And if you have any specific that you want me to address, if you want to send those to me ahead of time so I have those, I'd be glad to take those.
And um one other thing, this is about the budget. One of the things I think that Board Member Garcia brought up was about our declining enrollment. And one of the things that I think that everybody's seeing across the United States, but even impacting colleges and universities is our declining birth rates. So do we have some sort of trend analysis that has happened that we have done? So that we may not, they just might not exist is the.
So that we may not, they just might not exist is the, so we might, we, so that we can, we can take a look at that. Cause I don't want us to be chasing our tails for, for students who may or may not exist. So I, I don't know if we've done that. All right, I have, did you want to respond to me?
Yeah, the team and I would look at census data. We can't say for certain, for schools in the northwest and southwest and those areas that we know traditionally have had certain levels of density. They no longer have the level of density that they used to have. And so it is a trend. Individuals just aren't having as many children as they once had.
All right, board member Otte.
Thank you Board Chair McKinney. Interim Superintendent Dr. Richmond, I had, I had two principals ask me about step increase for principals. Where are we with that?
Thank you for that question. That, that question is a larger question involving as well the compensation study. There were some decisions made under the prior administration that has thrown principal compensation out of whack.
So with that, can we, can we, anything around HR and compensation? Can we leave that for our business systems review where we're gonna have, and please send your questions, please, to them so they'll have the answers. All right. Is there anything else around the Q1 financials? Any more questions? Dr. Richmond is at the end of your report.
Yes ma'am, thank you Chair.
All right, we're moving on to staff action items. The first item on the agenda is 7.1 Memphis Management Group, $236,717.50.
Yes madam chairs, recommend that the Shelby County Board of Education approve the Renaissance Convention Center contract in the amount of $236,717.50 to rent space for graduation ceremonies to be held at the Cannon Center and Renaissance Convention Center during business as Memphis Management Group MMG.
I have one light before you move on. And that's, that's board member, this is so confusing. Is that Coleman? Love, okay, it says McKinney and that's not me.
Last year Bolton High School had their graduation outside. And I have received calls that they want to have it in a church this year. I consulted Amber because that is her school, but my district attends that school. General Counsel, do you want to weigh in? Bolton High wants to have their graduation at a church, not outside in the hot sun.
Thank you.
In the summertime.
Thank you.
Wearing black.
Thank you for the, for the question, board member Love. I, I know we've had the discussion previously as, as a group. But when we are talking about hosting school sponsored events in places of worship, there's always the concern about the Establishment Clause of the Constitution. And there, there's certain potential legal risk there by, by hosting a graduation in a place of worship. Now, we typically tend to evaluate those requests on a case by case basis. But typically as a general matter, if there is an alternative space available, the, the preferred course is to try to identify and prepare sites that do not have any displays of religious iconography or, or that, anything of that nature.
So you're saying you're going to get with the principal and work on it?
I, I'll work with the, I'll get with the super, the interim superintendent.
Because it is hot in May.
I, I, I understand. We will, we will work to accommodate and make sure that nobody's too hot during graduations next year.
Thank you.
I have board member Coleman.
I'm sorry. Is this an increase or the same price from last year?
Dr. Luster, would you mind answering that question for me, please? Are, are more schools using the facility this year than last year?
So I want to piggyback off of something board member McKissick says quite often, is that they're charging us a lot to use the facilities. These are, they're children also. There, there needs to be a conversation had. Because I promise you, if we do it on some of our football fields, if we do it in some of our schools and they lose that money, they will reconsider and not be so high. And then going up, the cost goes up each year. If we can get them at one set price, that could be something we may could talk about. But each year, there's at least a five to 10% increase. That, again, this should be the least, they should want to support this for our children. Cause some of them are gonna get on stage and talk about how great these children are. And we know they're great children, we saw that tonight. And they are coming speak and they're going about their business, but they're gonna wait on you to send that check to them.
Yes ma'am, we did have a couple partnership meetings with, with the Convention Center. That were cross-functional, included a number of departments from our district. We did speak with them about pricing and also some of the things that are leading to this increase that we're seeing to the $236,000 mark this year. We also are wanting to explore master agreements, which will allow us to lock in pricing for a multi-year period of time. Of course, that is something that takes a little bit longer to develop and that's something that we are looking for for future years in terms of this particular engagement with the Convention Center.
Board member Murphy.
Quick question. So I'm asking, should we hold off on this for now and wait to see if we're gonna get a timeline on it? Or if, if we can renegotiate the price?
Dr. Luster, I guess this is also a question for general counsel of procurement. Do we feel that we can go back and try to negotiate a lower amount?
Truly Superintendent, we did attempt to do that earlier this year and that is how we arrived at this particular number. Certainly it is the board's decision in terms of how you choose to move and on what timeline. We do have schools that are waiting on confirmed graduation dates at this time. Certainly that decision belongs to the board. But if that is the direction that the board would like us to go in to follow back up with the vendor, certainly we'll do so.
I think what I've, I've heard is that you all have heard us, that you are looking to negotiate moving in the next iteration, something that will serve the district better and our students and be more in line with a partnership. And that that is something that may take a little time. But in the meantime, we don't want, we want to make sure that the students have some place to graduate and they know where they're graduating. But we do have a commitment that you all are gonna be looking at some alternatives.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, any more questions on 7.1? All right, next item, 7.2 approval, museums of science and history, Pink Palace and Lickerman Memorandum of Understanding, $189,000.
Yes madam chairs, recommend the Shelby County Board of Education approve the MOU value at $189,000 with the Museum of Science and History, Pink Palace and Lickerman Nature Center.
Any questions? Seeing questions, moving on to 7.3 grant acceptance, the Community Foundation of Greater Memphis for Barrett Chapel School in the amount of $25,050.54.
Yes madam chairs, recommend that the Shelby County Board of Education approve the grant of $25,050.54 for the Community Foundation of Greater Memphis awarded to Barrett Chapel School to be used to support the instructional program, enhancement to the playground and support the athletic department.
Seeing no questions, moving on to 7.4 grant acceptance, the Community Foundation of Greater Memphis for Bolton High School in the amount of $21,268.72.
Yes madam chairs, recommend Shelby County Board of Education approve a grant of $21,268.72 from the Greater Foundation of Greater Memphis awarded to Bolton High School to be used for the athletic program.
Any question? Seeing no questions, we'll move on to 7.5 approval, Microsoft Unified Support,
Yes madam chairs, recommend Shelby County Board of Education approve the contract with Microsoft Corporation in the amount of $494,682.21 for the use of Unified Enterprise Support Services for three years. The annual cost for year one is $164,894.07. Year two, $164,894.07. And year three, $164,894.07.
Seeing no questions, we'll move on to 7.6 approval, installation of walk-in freezers, coolers in the amount of $415,976.
Yes madam chairs, recommend Shelby County Board of Education approve the contract for federal equipment in the amount of $415,976 for the purchase and installation of eight new walk-in freezer coolers. This was based on JFB 07152025 MES.
Seeing no questions, we'll move on to 7.7 approval, Methodist Employee Assistance Program, Methodist EAP in the amount of $207,000.
Yes madam chairs, recommend Shelby County Board of Education approve the third year second renewal option contract to Methodist Labana Healthcare in the amount not to exceed $207,000 for employee assistance program, EAP, service for Memphis Shelby County Public Schools employee and their eligible family members.
I have Commissioner Love.
Val, what percentage of the employees utilize this service?
Ms. Oliver or Mr. Langston, do either you have the question to this answer or should we bring this answer back? Bring this, is someone here from benefits? Do we have anyone here from benefits? We'll bring it back, board member Love, we'll bring it back.
Okay, thank you. If you could bring that back next week and just have that data for us.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, we'll move to 7.8 approval, Clark Power Services in the amount of $228,613.
Yes madam chairs, recommend Shelby County Board of Education exercise the first renewal option of the contract Clark Power Services in the amount of $228,613 for district-wide generator preventive maintenance services.
Board member Porter.
Just a quick question. I think early on you had, you created a team of people to go around and to, to do preventive maintenance when schools open. Has that, has that team been created yet?
Ms. Stewart, can you elaborate on board member Porter's question, please?
Yes, we did get the jobs posted and we have been interviewing candidates and hope to have them on board by start of year.
So how, how would that cause this with this? Like, would they be doing the same job?
No, those preventive maintenance techs that the board approved positions for are specifically for HVAC. So that's filters and cleaning coils and all of those type HVAC jobs.
Seeing no further questions, we'll move to item 7.9 approval, United Elevator Services LLC in the amount of $217,313.
Yes madam chairs, recommend the board of education exercise the first annual renewal option of the contract with United Elevator Service LLC in the amount of $217,313 for district-wide elevator lift preventive maintenance service.
Seeing no questions, we will move to item number 7.10 approval, Johnson Controls Inc. in the amount of $443,843.
Yes madam chairs, recommend Shelby County Board of Education exercise the first renewal option of the contract with Johnson Control, Inc. in the amount of $443,843 for district-wide fire alarm inspection, testing and monitoring service.
Seeing no questions, we'll move to item number 7.11 approval, TISA Accountability Report.
Yes madam chairs, recommend that Shelby County Board of Education approve the 2025-26 TISA Accountability Report. Would you all like to see the report and the milestone data?
Yes.
Mr. White, would you please present the data?
So the full report is still in the process of being loaded into ePlan, which this is the first year they've asked us to load it into that state system. But the contents of the report you've actually really seen before in the sense that you've seen these goals and you've heard about some of these outcomes in our academic plan because we've made sure to align all of these goals with our academic plan. And then within the academic plan, you've heard about the strategies. So what the state expects us to do is to have these goals all the way to 2030. And they dictate essentially how these goals are derived. If you look at the previous outcomes and the expected outcomes, you'll see the goals haven't changed. So once these goals were established, and they were established a couple of years ago, they stay static. So you'll see that goal one is 52% of students will score proficient on the third grade ELA T cap by 2030. And so you'll see that stated again for the expected outcomes. The difference in the previous and the expected is that the previous, now that we have our 24-25 data, it shows where we were at that time. So the outcome was 29.2 for 24-25. And then the goal that we have for this year, the target is 37%. So that's how you read that. You'll see that with grade three ELA, you've got a goal that extends out to 2030. But then we've got a goal for grades three through 12 combined for ELA, math, science and social studies. And if you go to the next slide, I think, oh, okay. That just tells us about the, the, the fact that this is a compliance report that we have to now file and it came about as part of the TISA law. But we were short of our goals for 24-25. We did make progress in every area, but we were short of the annual target that we had. And so the actual report, once it's loaded, it will allow us to print that out. We will put it out for public comment. Of course, you will be able to see it at that time and you'll have it available before you take your vote. It will include the public comment when you have your vote next week. And again, it's really just a repackaging of the goals that you've already seen from the academic plan and the contents of the academic plan. of the goals that you've already seen from the academic plan and the contents of the academic plan.
Anything else, Superintendent? No, alright, alright. Commissioner Love.
Um, Superintendent, how much money did? Did we lose for the district not meeting the goal?
We, we didn't lose any funding for that. I'm sorry, I know you directed it at the Superintendent, I apologize.
Thank you, Bill Wright.
Sorry.
What procedures are you going to change academically next year and this year to help us meet our goals?
Thanks for that question. Um, one of the things that, that we're doing is the district has, uh, a scorecard. Uh, that scorecard will cascade down through, uh, the district where, uh, I have accountability metrics, regional superintendents have accountability metrics, instructional leadership coaches have, have, uh, metrics to meet, and principals at their schools will have their individual metrics, so that we're all, all of our goals are aligned. We'll be meeting to see where we are uh, in achieving those goals. And then on the business side of the house, uh, they will also have metrics that will be aligned to the scorecard. The one thing we'll try to do both, uh, quarterly and as frequently as possible uh, is to look at and visit the data. As you saw earlier, when Ms. Davis, uh, was reporting out, if you looked at her, uh, presentation, it started with her scorecard and what her office is accountable and responsible for in terms of attendance, uh, and discipline, and chronic absenteeism, uh, and so forth and so on, and enrollment. Uh, so what we're trying to do is to hold ourselves accountable, uh, to set high, uh, proficiency and ambitious goals, and to have strategies and action plans in place that we're visiting, uh, revisiting, uh, daily, weekly, and quarterly, uh, to see where we are with achieving the goals that we've set for ourselves. Uh, and as I said earlier, uh, everyone is going to be held to a standard of accountability, uh, throughout the district by having their own role-alike scorecard that aligns with, uh, our, our TISA goals, but also the goals that we've agreed upon, uh, as senior leaders, uh, and leaders and employees throughout the district.
Um, I do have a, a, a couple of questions. Benchmarks, that's one of these targets that you have, that you get set annually. Who sets those? Does the state?
The state sets it, and again, I'm glad that, uh, Mr. White pointed it out. Uh, if you look at what the state has set, and I try to remind people that, uh, TCAP is aligned with NAP. Uh, we were told that, which means the assessment that we have in Tennessee is probably one of the most rigorous uh, in the country because it's aligned with, uh, national standards. So if you look at the goals that they've set, we know that they are extremely, uh, ambitious, uh, but they are not super ambitious. The state didn't set like they did under NCLB. They didn't set a goal of one hundred percent. They set a goal of fifty-one percent because that's probably a smarter, more realistic goal. But even for a district like ours, it's going to be ambitious. If the, if the board has listened to me, uh, I'm setting a high bar for both myself and my team by saying, we cannot get to where we have to go by twenty-thirty with two, one or two tenths of a percent gains. We have to look at increasing by five, five to seven, if not ten percent every year in order for us to be able to hit the fifty-two, fifty-one, forty-seven, twenty, fifty-two, and fifty-one percent, uh, by twenty-thirty.
Thank you. Um, and then on the public comment part, this was something that I, I brought up last year in terms of public comment. How are we as a, a, a district advertising and communicating that to our community? That this is something that we need them to give us public comment and feedback about? Um, how are we, how are we doing that?
I'll let Mr. White, Mr. White.
Yeah, um, when we get it ready to, to put it out there and, and give the public a few days, um, we're gonna use social media, we're gonna use our typical communication channels to communicate that out, to say, look, this is out there. Please take a look at it, give us your feedback.
How much public comment did we get last year, and do you know what vehicles we used?
Um, we honestly didn't get a lot. Um, I mean, it really was strictly a handful. But I think we last year maybe only kind of announced, we posted it and kind of only announced it once, or something like that. So we can do, we can certainly do more this year.
I appreciate that. We need to, if, this is serious, and this is something that if the state is saying they want public comment, then we need to take it seriously, and we take it that way anyway. But as much as we can do is have a full, comprehensive communications plan to push it out, so we can get the co-comment, that would be great.
Thank you.
Alright, seeing no further questions on this, let's move to seven point one two. Approval, First Eight Memphis Wraparound Contract in the amount of one million three hundred and forty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes, Madam Chair, it's recommended the Shepherd County Board of Education approve the ratification of the contract with First Eight Memphis in the amount of one million three hundred forty-eight thousand six hundred fifty dollars to provide comprehensive wraparound services support for thirty-seven pre-K classrooms for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Seeing no questions, I'll move to seven point one three. Approval, First Eight Memphis Preschool Direct Services Contract in the amount of five million four, forty-nine thousand five hundred and eleven dollars.
Yes, Madam Chair, it's recommended the Shepherd County Board of Education approve the ratification of the contract with First Eight Memphis in the amount of five million forty-nine, five-eleven to fund preschool direct services in thirty-seven classrooms for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Seeing no questions, I move to seven one four. Approval, First Eight Memphis Coaching Contract, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars.
Yes, Madam Chair, it's recommended the Shepherd County Board of Education approve the ratification of the contract with First Eight Memphis in the amount of two hundred fifty-nine thousand to provide coaching support in thirty-seven classrooms for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Seeing no questions, move to item seven point one five. Approval, Porter Lee's First Eight Memphis Head Start Contract in the amount of two million forty-one thousand dollars.
Yes, Madam Chair, it's recommended the Shepherd County Board of Education approve the ratification of agreement with Porter Lee's Head Start in the amount of two million forty-one thousand to continue managing pre-K services, wraparound support, and instructional coaching. This contract supports thirteen classrooms serving three- and four-year-old children and their family at a rate of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars per classroom.
Seeing no questions, moving to item seven point one six. Approval, First Eight Memphis Community Partners Contract in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, Madam Chair, it's recommended the Shepherd County Board of Education approve the ratification of the contract with First Eight Memphis in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars, one hundred thousand dollars per classroom to continue full implementation of educational services to four-year-old children and their families in two community partner programs. The Community Partners Hope House and Cadazle each operate one classroom collectively serving forty students. This recommendation aligns with Tennessee Department of Education's mandate to ensure high-quality pre-K programs across the state.
Seeing no questions, moving to the next item, seven point one seven. Approval, State Systems, two hundred sixty-one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes, Madam Chair, it's recommended the Shepherd County Board of Education execute the first annual renewal option of the contract with the state system for water sprinkler inspections and repair services for two hundred sixty-one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
Seeing no questions, moving to item seven point one eight. Approval, Todd Air Conditioning and Refrigeration LLC in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yes, Madam Chair, it's recommended the Shepherd County Board of Education approve the contract for Todd Air Conditioning and Refrigeration LLC in the amount of one hundred fifty thousand dollars for twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six school year with the option of renewing two additional one-year terms. This was based on, uh, one FB zero seven one six two zero two five MES.
Seeing no questions, moving to seven point one nine. Approval, Nutrition Services Truck Engines Replacement in the amount of one hundred sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-two cents.
Yes, Madam Chair, it's recommended the Shepherd County Board of Education approve the contract with Clark Power Services in the amount of one hundred sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars thirty-two cents for the purchase and installation of four new truck engines. This was based on IFB zero five zero six two zero two five MES.
Seeing no questions, moving to item number seven point two zero. Approval, Contracts to Demolish Three Former Head Start Facilities, Delano Head Start, Henley Head Start, Georgian Hills Head Start, in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars and twelve cents.
Yes, Madam Chair, it's recommended the Shepherd County Board of Education approve the contract with APS Facility Maintenance for demolition of three former head start center, um, metal, metal buildings for a hundred sixty thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars and twelve cents.
Board Member Murphy.
One quick question. Are those buildings being occupied right now?
No. These are old, old buildings that are still on those grounds.
Thanks.
See, seeing no further questions, moving to item seven point two two. BSN Purchasing Rebate Program Agreement. No dollar amount.
Yes, Madam Chair, it's recommended the Shepherd County Board of Education approve the five-year non-exclusive purchasing rebate agreement with BSN Sports. MSCS will receive a yearly percentage rebate credit on aggregate purchases. Uh, annual spend amount, annual rebate credit amount, one hundred thousand to the hundred ninety-nine, nine, 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 seven percent of annual spend, two hundred thousand to two hundred ninety-nine, nine, 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 eight percent of the annual spend, three hundred thousand to four hundred ninety-nine, nine, 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 nine percent of the annual spend, and five hundred thousand plus ten percent of annual spend.
I do have a question. What do they sell? I mean, what are we buying from them? Is this uniforms?
Ath- athletic apparel.
Oh, uh, uniform? And equipment? Okay.
I don't think BSN is locally located, but I'd defer to.
Yeah, BSN is located, uh, their, their corporate office is in Texas, but they are a sister company of varsity spirit, which is based here in Memphis.
I'd see two lights. I'd see Board Member Hewitt Garcia, and then Board Member Murphy.
So the rebate credits, based on the past three years, we should expect to get fifty thousand dollars. Is that a credit for additional equipment, or do they write us a check? Like, is that a, is it a sort of a, a credit towards?
I, I think it is, uh, for BSN purchase credit.
It is a credit.
I believe that. Mr. Langston's that, yes, yes, ma'am.
Do we just use that to offset, like, athletic apparel for students in need, or just we build that, do we build that into the budget?
I'll defer to Mr. Lang.
Thank you, Dr. Richmond. So, great question. So, one of the things that, um, board members have been asking is that we do, uh, we support schools in, uh, apparel and equipment, you know, uh, purchases. So what this does is, it, it works with, in conjunction with our athletics department. And while it's not, uh, checked directly back for us to use elsewhere, it defers what we spend out for uniform purchases. So to your point, we spent six hundred and ninety-eight thousand last year. If this was in place, we would have gotten a rebate check of seventy thousand dollars to be able to support schools with uniforms and apparel, specifically with BSN. And then, what this doesn't, um, encompasses is the cheer. I'm looking at Cheer McKinney. However, we'll be, we're gonna work with, uh, varsity because they do cheer uniforms and try to bring back another rebate program specifically for cheer. But this does hit the, the major gen, uh, s- s- sports, revenue generating sports at the schools.
Thank you. Board Member McKissick, I knew, go ahead. When we said cheer.
Then she said cheer. You know, my ears perked up. So where does this stand, and, and, I'll understand maybe T double S, double A, but i- in terms of Title IX and the equity there for, um, sporting events that, that, that there's parity for, you know, cheerleaders or, or whomever, uh, how does that apply with all of this?
It's, this specifically doesn't really apply. Again, this is just us looking at an opportunity to support our schools where it'll decrease their spending and revenue generating sports, so they can possibly, uh, choose to, if they choose to support cheer. I'll say cheer, and Dr. Richmond can help me because he's a longstanding athletics person, it's a little different than other, well, I can.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll stop you there. Uh, so maybe this is a question for the General Counsel, if not our, uh, our interim superintendent. Because I just happened to, I was talking with a, a cheer coach over in Arkansas, and they literally pay for their cheer camps, uniforms, they provide transportation to cheer camp. And meanwhile, our cheerleaders, who are amazing, are hustling hard just to get from point A to point B. So I just, I don't know what's going on here, and maybe it's a Tennessee thing or Shelby County, but, um, it was impressive when I was over in Marion, Arkansas, of all places. You're gonna get back with me on that one?
Oh, I, yeah. I think there's different ways to look at Title IX. Um, one thing that I really like about having a female athletic director, uh, Ms. Weaver, is she's always gonna keep Title IX in the forefront of everything that we do. So when we look at, uh, the equity around providing comparable, uh, athletic supports and events and things like that for our, uh, female and male as, uh, athletes, I think we do a great job of, uh, doing what we need to do around Title IX. Now, when we look at equity in regards to the funding and the support of not just, uh, athletics in one building, but across our whole entire district, uh, there's a lot more that we could do in order for it to be, uh, equitable. Uh, because from school to school, that may look different. The one thing I've tried to do since, when I was over athletics and even in this role, schools will tell you, I've tried to give them money so that they can, uh, provide equity and access as it relates to all of their sports. Is it perfect? Uh, no. When I think about a district like Marion, it's probably a smaller district.
It is.
Uh, we support over a hundred schools because we also support the charters. And within each of those schools, each one of them may have up to about ten athletic programs. So you're talking about an athletic department that is extremely lean. We have five people in that department who are supporting about fifteen thousand sports programs and anywhere from five to ten thousand athletic events at any given time. So, it's difficult to say that there's gonna be equity in every aspect, even though we're, we're striving for equity.
I appreciate that, and I just wanna say that we can continue to put the spotlight, because I know my fellow board members, we certainly have all given to cheer programs who are always scratching, trying to get money because it's just the least regarded, and we all know it's very much a sport. Go to any game and watch these cheerleaders and that the athletics, uh, athleticism that they put into it. So just, just putting the spotlight on that for our cheerleaders. Thank you so much, Dr. Richmond.
Board Member Murphy, I apologize for overlooking.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I think Tito answered my question already. Um, but one, one question I wanted to add, and I know that we see a lot of majorettes as well. And so maybe i- i- can we include them into the cheerleading things as well? What is this? Yes, I, I gotta hear, what you saying? I thank you, thank you, Tito. That, that's my only question.
Board Member Garcia.
I think this reminds me of the request that we made for, um, an analysis of board allocations over the last few years. And so I would love to see cheer and other athletics not currently covered in the budget. So, we might actually be funding it quite a bit, um, if board members are giving allocation. So if there is a trend, then we should consider at least, um, some policy around a percentage, or maybe we rotate, uh, maybe it's not every year. I think having that analysis, just putting that back at the top of our minds about where we are spending money, uh, and then make some budget decisions.
Thank you for that, and if you can include in that information, I believe that under, I asked for a, um, a, amount that it would cost to fund all the. uh amount that it would cost to fund all the, all of the um sports and their uniforms, to give them one uniform. And I, you know, to me, it didn't seem like much in terms of our budget. But we can, we can take a look at that included as well. It included everything. So if we could get all that information and just, let's do a deep dive at some point. See how we can continue to work towards it. All right.
Point of order. I just wanted to tell Tito thank you, cuz he he always come through when I need him. So thank you so much. You're my friend. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Um let's keep moving. All right, I think that's it on the staff action items. We're now at board items. Eight point one, proposed policies, first reading.
Good evening, everyone. Uh Superintendent. Good evening, Superintendent. Board members, are you all able to hear me?
Hold up for a minute. We can't hear you. I don't know what's going on with the mic. But let me do this. Recommended action is, it is recommended that the Shelby County Board of Education approves the following. Suspension of Policy zero zero two eight dash data dashboard, October twenty-eighth of this year through January twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-six. Policy two thousand one, annual operating budget, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five through January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-six. And then it is recommended that revisions to policy be made to Policies three zero zero seven, Student Wellness, four zero zero three, Employee Conflict of Interest, five zero one four, Grading System for Grades Pre-K Through Five, five zero one five, Grading System for Grades Six Through Twelve, and sixty fifty-one, Interscholastic Athletics.
May you also add um Policy one zero one five, um Board?
And we're adding Policy one zero zero, one zero one five, Board District General Counsel.
Well, thank you. Um as you may remember, we're presenting the policies previously announced that were discussed during the committee meeting this afternoon. Um just as a quick reminder, we're requesting suspension of the rules for Policy zero zero two eight, Data Dashboard, um Policy zero, excuse me, Policy two zero zero one, Annual Operating Budget, uh to have those approved for October. Um Policy three zero zero seven, Student Wellness. Again, the major revision is to uh incorporate the state law that requires the minimum amount of physical activity required for elementary students uh to increase from the one hundred and thirty minutes per uh full school week to forty minutes per school day. Uh that physical activity must be unstructured outside play. Um cannot include physical education class or any time permitted where students are permitted to use an electronic device. The next policy, Policy four zero zero three, Employee Conflict of Interest. The major revision there is to revise the scope. And that's on page twenty-eight of the red um pages. To revise the scope, to remove vendor and suppliers uh to cause the scope to apply to all Memphis Shelby County Schools employees rather than key employees and senior management only. It will require senior level employees to file a disclosure statement annually and other employees to complete a disclosure when a potential conflict arises and whenever possible before engaging in the activity. The next policy, Policy five zero one four, is on the red page thirty-two. And also Policy five zero one five. Uh these are the grading system policies for both pre-K through five as well as six through eight. Uh the revisions are the same in both policies. Uh they are required by s- uh the stat- change in statute uh which aligns with the state law that requires local boards of education to develop and implement a policy uh that to include in, excuse me, on or with the pre-K eight students' report card, the results or scores of any of the most recently administered universal reading or dyslexia screeners. Uh this, for these policies, the revisions also include language, allowing the superintendent to delegate responsibility in the policy. Moving on to uh red page fifty, which is Policy six zero five one, Interscholastic Athletics. The major revision in this policy includes alignment with the new state law that allows um that requires that uh requires that districts allow virtual school students the opportunity to participate in interscholastic athletics. The revisions here also include language allowing the superintendent to delegate responsibility within the policy. Um as a point of information on red page fifty-eight, which is Policy six zero two two, Student Conduct. The major revision here is a state requ- um uh state requirement from the, a change in state law which al- aligns with the current law that states if districts report a credible threat to the state or local law enforcement, then it must notify the parents of all the students in the school regarding that threat. The revisions also include language regarding the right to due process when students are experienced exclusionary disciplinary measures as well as the authority of the principal to issue one to ten-day suspensions for uh for to students um with two uh requirements. One, a behavior improvement plan for suspension for more than five days as well as a, the submission of a suspension notification report to the regional superintendent for a single suspension between five and ten days. Um the document that was passed out to you is Policy one zero one five. It includes the revision that was requested by Board Member Hewitt Garcia during the committee meeting. Um to re- to reiterate those changes, uh the policy was revised so that the district, excuse me, the Board District General Counsel shall be authorized to perform the following. First, enter into professional service contracts up to seventy-four nine ninety, seventy-four thousand nine 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 ninety-nine with the exception of professional legal services. Engage outside legal, excuse me, engage outside counsel for any legal matter involving the district. The Board District General Counsel shall notify the board if legal fees are equal to or exceed one hundred thousand dollars on any individual matter. The final re- the the next revision here is to approve and sign settlement agreements requiring payment of up to one hundred thousand dollars, including agreements requiring specific performance. Any settlement over the one hundred thousand dollars would be approved and signed by the executive committee. Settlements shall not be limited to the budget of the general counsel if such settlement is to be funded through another department. Uh the other major revision from committee was to include some reporting requirements. The initial reporting requirement revision included a semi-annual, every six months list of all settlements approved and signed by the executive committee. Uh the addition since the committee meeting is to also include an annual aggregate total for all of the legals, for all legal settlements. So with that, those are the revisions from uh committee. Are there any questions on any of those?
Does anyone have any questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Green.
Thank you.
Just as a reminder, board members, we are being asked to suspend the policy that requires two readings on two of the policies next week. Zero zero two eight, Data Dashboard, and two zero zero one, Annual Operating Budget. If you have any questions before then, please get them to um Ms. Maria Stewart, our policy officer and general counsel. All right. No further questions. Let's move to added eight point two. Superintendent Evaluation Update. I will n- hand this over to Ms., to Board Member Hewitt Garcia and Board Member Coleman.
Yes, thank you, Chair McKenney. Uh this is an item. We deferred our evaluation committee item. This is brief. Um tonight, I just wanted to inform the public, along with Vice Chair Coleman, who is the co-chair of the evaluation committee, that uh it has been in the request of interim superintendent and agreement of a mid-year evaluation um to provide feedback to Dr. Richmond. So we'll be reaching out to uh organizations like Council Great City Schools, to TSBA, and looking at um e- existing considerations uh and working with Dr. Richmond to agree on the things uh that we can provide feedback at this point, looking at his hundred-day plan, et cetera. So we just wanted to make you all aware that we, that Vice Chair Coleman and I will start having those discussions with interim Richmond and expect to bring something either next month or into January. And that is it for the time.
Any questions? Seeing no questions, this meeting, there being no further business. Wait a minute, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good.